Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Smithfield School Committee meeting to order. If you all would please rise from the bench to the floor. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll read the emergency evacuation and health notification. In the case of emergency, there are two main exits out of the media center. They are located to the right and left side of the media center through the set of double doors. Proceed to follow the exit signs to the exit doorways. There are restrooms located outside of the media center through either side of the double doors. There is a public comment sign up sheet for those who wish to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. And when you do speak, we ask that you utilize the podium so all your comments are on the records. I will now proceed to the swearing in of the newly elected school committee members. Earlier today, the Board of Cameriers for the town of Smithfield met and certified the 2024 local election results. And both Ashley E. Hogan and Jeffrey R. LeBlanc were determined to be the winners of that contest for the Smithfield School Committee for the next four-year term. The last step in that process is the swearing in where they will take an oath swearing their support to the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the laws of the state of Rhode Island, and to faithfully discharge the duties of the school committee to the best of their abilities. Are you both prepared to take the oath this evening?
Yes.
Please rise and please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeffrey LeBlanc.
I, Ashley Hogan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Rhode Island.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Rhode Island.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of school committee person to the best of my abilities.
And will faithfully execute the duties of school committee person to the best of my abilities, so under God.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I will now move on to the reorganization of school committee and approval of officers. The first item here is nomination, vote, and approval of chairperson. Do I have a nomination for chairperson?
Yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Richard Onitelli as the chairperson of the school committee.
Okay, then I'm hearing a nomination for Richard Onitelli as chairperson of the school committee. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none. Is there a second on the nomination for Richard Onitelli as chairperson?
Second.
The nomination being made and seconded, is there any further discussion on that nomination? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Now we'll take nominations for the position of vice chairperson.
I would like to nominate Jessica Salam as vice chair.
Do we have any other nominations? If not, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it. Very good. Congratulations. Next, we will take the nomination and vote for the approval of the secretary.
I would like to nominate Amanda Pafford as the secretary.
Okay, do we have other nominations? If not, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it. Congratulations. We'll move right on. Before we do that, I want to say one thing. Congratulations. Now, the election's over. And it's our job, the people of Smithfield expect us to govern. Some people want to keep elections going and they'll make potshots or whatever. We just have to do our best to keep our focus on what our job here is, and that is providing what we can for the best education in town of Smithfield. So, having said that, I know that we won't always agree on everything, but I think that we will somehow be able to manage, put things together, and come up with a good product. Okay, we're now going to move on to item number six, consent agenda items. I'm going to break this to two votes because the first one, the approval of minutes, two new members can't vote on, and the others can't, and then we'll do the others all together. So, first one is item 6.1, approval of minutes. These are the minutes of the November 4th, 2024 school committee meeting.
Motion to approve meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it. Now we'll do the rest of the agenda, consent agenda. Item 6.2, approval of bills. The regular bills totaling $743,713.45. The direct checks from November 1st, 2024 through November 26th, 2024 totaling $112,332.42. And lunch bills totaling $144,701.59. And we have the approval of homeschooling, which is on our attached list. So this require motion?
Motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made, second. Questions? Anybody have questions on any of those items? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it. Item number seven, high school rep report. Now, High School St. Rep is not here tonight, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering if I have a very short slide presentation just to give the school committee an update on some of the maintenance improvements that have been done in the schools since the summer through the fall. Just as a recap, last summer certainly through fund balance as well as through our own maintenance fund, monies were allocated to seal the high school parking lot line and stripe the walkways that was done during the summer. The lines, the parking lot was also striped at GMS. This summer, we were able to paint several of the larger areas of the school, including the little theater, this library, media center, the intensive special education room, plus two other special education rooms in the high school. In addition, we did paint the ceramics room. We were able to purchase ceiling tiles, and those rooms that were painted, including some of the hallways, where the ceiling tiles were replaced there as well as in part of the hallway at GMS with the funding that we were able to secure. We also, during the summer, celebrated our community service day with our students, certainly administrator from the high school, myself, and members of the president from Bryant's University. His office came down. We did beautify the parking lot area and the front lawns. So I just want to point that out. We were able to continue with some of the painting at the high school and develop a maintenance plan so that each year we will take a select number of classrooms. Those would be designated by the principals at either the high school or at Gallagher Middle School to be able to repaint them and to replace ceiling tiles as part of a plan of improvement. Recently, 10 high school classrooms were painted, had their ceiling tiles replaced, and thanks to a vote of the school committee, they received new student desks and chairs. I believe some of them may have even been originals to the school. So the principal chose those 10 classrooms, which covered two of our departments, math and social studies. In addition, there is ongoing effort to replace ceiling tiles aesthetically. The high school main hallway, if you come in through door two and go down to the gym, those have all been replaced, Mrs. Sala, as well. In addition, for safety purposes, playground fencing has been installed at La Perch Middle School. I think it's aesthetically pleasing, and I think it adds an extra element of safety to that elementary school, certainly something I'd like to revisit with the school committee at our other elementary schools. In addition, with the beautiful Boyle project, cameras were added for security. Certainly, a lot of money was, has been spent. It is a beautiful facility and trying to keep it that way, as well as having security. In addition, several internal cameras were added to this high school, again, to increase security of the buildings. Our administrative team, again, thanks to the school committee, have received, they're getting programmed, an update with our walkie-talkies as well. The pictures that you can see there is kind of interesting. Kids are very excited to have, as are the teachers, to have freshly painted classrooms. Our maintenance crew, I really have to hand it to them and our director of facilities, Angela Mencucci, as well as our high school administrative staff. So they were able to paint a room every two to three days just by switching the classrooms so that we can get this done and start this project. Ideally, we would do it during the summer, but we did want to start this project because we did have the paint and the funds. These are some of the new desks. You'll see that the chairs are separate from the desks, and that may not sound like a big deal, but when high school kids try to get into, or adults, the connecting desks and chairs, it's about impossible. So these are great quality. And again, there's different configurations, so they can go together or separate, but it does, it is much more welcoming for our students to have this new furniture that we anticipate will last a long time. Mr. Chairman, would you mind if I gave a Boyle complex update?
Go ahead.
As long as we're here, I'm just going to move agenda item number 11 up. This is a picture of the concession stand. It is almost done. It is coming along, as you can see. There are still a few more things, so we are not ready to sign off on that final project. But the director of facilities and I are going to walk through this building in GMS tomorrow because we do plan on signing off on the Honeywell equipment if everything is in order. That was the HVAC for both the middle school and the high school that was done early on in the project. And again, our beautiful track, field scoreboard. And finally, our Smithfield High School Sentinel Showcase is tomorrow at the high school. I certainly hope that we will have not only eighth graders attending, but also seventh graders who are starting, maybe their parents are starting to think about high school, even elementary parents and students to come here. It's going to be very interactive. Everything will be located on the first floor of the high school, so there will be all of the academic departments, the clubs, the athletics, and our career and technical education programs. As you know, we have five programs, and we hope to have the culinary program online for next year. And again, if you drive up to the high school, you see the signs that we have done some heavy advertising. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for that update. I really appreciate to see all of the work that's being done classroom by classroom. We all know it's been well overdue, particularly the desks and the painting. I love that you were able to get the ceiling tiles done in the main hallway of the gym. We just know that drives a lot of traffic, especially for the Sentinel Showcase, so it'll be great to have that visibility there. One question I had, I don't think anything we have on the agenda tonight will really get into some of the questions I have about the Boyle Complex concession stand, but you mentioned closing out HVAC, so I do have some questions about the heating in the concession stand, so I just want to make sure nothing's closed out.
No, nothing is there. This is just the HVAC at the high school and GMS.
Okay, and none of the heating elements that are in the concession stand are joined in with that? They are not. Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll just make one comment in terms of the ceiling tiles. Ceiling tiles are one of those things, when they are broken and look ugly, they look ugly, everybody notices it. When you fix them, nobody notices it. I had, I told a few faculty members early on in the school year, and I said, hey, look up. Don't notice it, but anyhow, looks good. We'll get there in a little bit of time, but thank you very much for that report. Now we're going to go to item number nine, discussion of capital projects. Now, this is a discussion, and you have a large detail there which you can look over for the next few weeks. Much like we did last year where we presented realistic goals to the town council and to the budget board, we should keep the train rolling and do the same thing for next year. So look through that, be ready at our next meeting to come up with what we feel as a group should be presented to them. And these are things that have to be realistically got to be done, able to be done. So, any questions on that at all? An hour?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, which is item 10. Discuss, review, and approve the approval of the Arts Initiative Act II SBA Capital Fund MOA for $85,148. This, because its approval will require a motion.
Motion to approve the MOA for Arts Initiative.
And a second.
Second.
Motion has been made, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an extension of the arts grant that we do receive. The arts grant that we have had for the past two years has funded the summer arts program for our middle school. I'd like Dr. Monaco to speak on this, if you don't mind. This is additional monies that can be used to expand our program and facility.
Sure, so as Dr. Bart had mentioned, we were able to really beef up our arts and music programs from that first round of funding. We were able to run the summer program, get instruments, you know, a lot of those things that are difficult to buy when the budgets are tight, and so we're really hoping to do the same. We even got a lot of different equipment for the stage and the auditorium, which was really exciting. And so, you know, we do have an arts task force, hoping to get that task force together again, prioritize needs, and, you know, get what our students need.
Thank you.
Questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it. And I'm going to be passing some forms to the school committee members. You just sign them, print your name, and get them back to me before the end of the meeting. Item 11, we did update on Boyle Project. Any, is there any further questions on Boyle? Okay. The other?
I just have further questions about the, so I connected with some of the folks that were in the concessions that night. I just want to make sure that everything that was on their list was addressed. It sounds like we do still have, heat was on in the facility, however, it wasn't really reaching a level that they expected it to be at. So these are things that I just want to make sure before anybody walks off of our job site, that these are not just, like, check items. These are making sure that the facilities are delivering to the expectation of what our contract was. So, in addition to that, it seemed like we might have had a little bit of water pooling in front of the main concession area, so we want to make sure that's addressed, whether it's drainage or whatnot. And then electrical wise as well, I think we don't even have all of the equipment that's supposed to be in there just yet. I think Sue just had some of her coffee strands running. She still has a refrigerator coming in, freezer, microwave, things like that. So we want to make sure that she's not going to purchase those items ahead of time because it wouldn't make sense, right? We want to make sure warranty wise, whatnot, she purchases them and is able to use them right away. So we need a way to be able to just test capacity and make sure that everything is going to work when she has it in there. So I know we don't have anything on here tonight to sign off on other than outstanding bills or work, I think, for the RPM, but I just want to make sure those items are all addressed before.
Absolutely, certainly. Not only the Boyle Committee, but our director of facilities is on that, as am I, so we will not be signing off on anything. That job has to be 100% complete. Thanks.
Okay, further questions? Yes, sit down.
Can you have an update on the bricks? An explanation for a lot of people about the bricks? Again, Mr. Chairman, is that okay?
Sure.
Yes, so we have two shipments of the engraved bricks. We're still taking orders for those. So the first shipment with the four-by-eight bricks will be placed around the flagpole that you see when you first come in there. So that work will be done. We're still taking orders. We also have orders for the eight-by-eight engraved bricks, and those will be in another area, also very visible for the concession. But we certainly are still selling them. We will be laying those bricks in the springtime when everything is done, including our concession stand, and we can really have a grand opening. So if anyone needs to purchase any, certainly they can call the school department. There are QR codes as well as at the Boyle Complex. By the way, the track is open. It is lit through 8:00 at night for those people who don't mind being out in the cold and walking, certainly to enjoy our facility. If you happen to pass by any of the signs, you will see there's a QR code, so you can just very easily order a brick right there at the track as well.
Okay, thank you. Bring us to item number 12. Discuss, review, and approve the RGB invoice, number 668329, not to exceed $1,500. Since this is an approval, this does require a motion.
Motion to approve the RGB architect.
And a second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further explanation other than the copy that we have here? I guess not.
Quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
First time seeing one of these invoices, but I just, I noticed it says professional services rendered between September 1st and September 30th, but a lot of the dates that are included in there are July and August. Is that typical for these invoices? Because it makes it seem like it's just for the month of September, but the majority of those dates are outside of that time period.
Right. I'm going to turn it over, but I mean, it does happen because sometimes they don't actually bill the hours. They send an invoice with hours that were billed prior, but I know what you mean. But I will, my, basically I have that right.
Right, yeah, so what happens is, is they, they track the hours and then they bill them, and then when they send the invoice, it comes through. We take it to the Boyle Subcommittee first, so they could be allowed. So this would have been in the last meeting, but it was canceled. This was approved by the Boyle Committee on November 7th, and then our last meeting was canceled. So it does happen that they track the hours and they may delay in the billing, and then they, they enter an invoice, but it is, could be for work from previous months.
Thank you. Okay, no further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it. Item number 13. Discuss, review, and approve Stephen Turner invoices, 5377, 5407, 5454, 5505, 5548, 5614, 5653, not to exceed $28,745.33. Can it require a motion?
Motion to approve the Stephen Turner invoice.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any questions?
So if I may, I'll just add, this is one where there was multiple invoices that were being held by RGB, our own project manager. So before they were finished, they had some questions on some of those invoices, then they were handed in together. So those are over a series of months in this particular instance. Same thing, went to the Boyle Committee on November 7th, and then we're bringing them forward here. We always go to the Boyle Committee first, except in a rare instance, so.
Okay, further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? The ayes have it. Item number 14. Discuss, I think you just wanted to discuss this, am I correct?
That's correct.
Discuss, review the consulting contract with Rosewood Consulting during 24-25 school year for federal and state grant writing.
So this is just, I wanted to give the school committee some information. As you know, I meet, certainly the finance director and I meet biweekly with the interim town manager and the finance director as we are building our budget. Certainly, the town has benefited greatly by this consulting company, Rosewood, in terms of bringing in much larger federal grants, half a million to several million dollars for different projects. The interim town manager certainly encouraged a discussion, which I had been asking for. So this is just for you to know that we're engaging in, I'd like to engage in a discussion to see how this may or may not be beneficial to, for us to be able to procure federal grants. Federal grants, I have done them, I know Dr. Monaco has, they are extremely labor-intensive. They are a full-time job. So to be able to see some of the larger grants and to be able to apply for those so that we can continue to improve our school district. Some examples of some grants that are half a million and more would be safety and security for our schools, but also some that are associated with renovations, particularly as we're looking to upgrade our facilities and move forward with career and technical education programs. So these are, no cost to us to have these meetings, and certainly if there is a proposal, it would come to you as well.
Okay. So this is just tonight to discuss it. If you have any questions, it'll be on future agenda to approve. There are any questions right now? If not, we're going to move on, okay? We'll move on to, let's see, item number 15, communications. Copy of resignations, retirements, new hires in the district, copy of a summary of donations given to Smithfield Schools for Thanksgiving, and a copy of the E-Rate contract. Item 16, public forum. Thank you. Matt Domenico.
Hi, Matt Domenico, Five Robin Hall Circle. Congratulations. Happy to see you here. So, not quite sure who to ask, what to ask, but dear friend of mine who coached basketball in this community, high school for about 30 years, and I was sort of awake and was made aware of the fact that they were not rehiring. So I'm curious about the rubric, the hiring process, because it speaks to how we treat people in the school district. 35 years plus, I'm sure Dennis could give you the exact number, but I couldn't live myself just having listened to them talk about how they basically were disposed of. So I don't know who to ask, what the process is, what's the rubric, criteria. It's just disgraceful to treat people like that. I think that's an awful message to send to the people who work in this community and the school system. So I don't know if this can be a discussion at another meeting, but the hiring process, rubric, criteria, there are a lot of people unhappy. If it gets on the agenda, I think there's going to be a number of people that speak on their behalf. It's too late, I get it, but it speaks to how we treat people in the school. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. With regards to discussion, school committee actually can't talk about something that's not on the agenda tonight that doesn't mean can't do in the future. Do you feel comfortable talking about the procedure?
Certainly. There is a hiring policy that was adopted by the school committee. It is also online on our website. It is used for all hires that are in the district, whether it is a teacher, an administrator, a coach, a paraprofessional, or a secretary. It does require that there is a committee minimally, including an administrator, a teacher, and at least one parent or community member. In the case, again, I'm not going into personnel, in the case of recent hires of coaches, that committee process was followed. Questions are submitted in advance. They are asked of all candidates. There is a committee recommendation that comes out of all hiring, no matter what the position is. That recommendation from the committee and/or the supervisor is sent forwarded to me, and ultimately I do the appointments on those. I may ask questions about them. There's typically a lot of background that is included in those hiring packets, not just the questions, but the responses, the votes that were done, and then if I have any questions, those are asked and answered. But we do follow the hiring policy for all hires, and certainly we're doing this consistently with all of the athletic positions. We do it with all the teaching positions, and of course with any administration positions.
Thank you. Let's see, any question we have on public forum or the only items? Next, we have consider items to add to future agendas. I have one, and it involves all the school committee members. I'd like if you can be thinking of two or three items that you would like to see us working on so that we can kind of have a plan going into next year. working on so that we can kind of have a plan going into next year as to some things. But we'll still have this item on the agenda, so if an individual item, somebody wants to talk about it, put it on a future agenda, we will. But I'm just trying to get a, like I say, kind of a plan, kind of an outline of what we might be interested in working on during the year. So, it's your homework assignment. Anybody else on the future agenda? If not, consider a vote, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second.
Second.
Motion has been made, it's seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Thank you very much.